You are watching Access La Porte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the July 7th meeting, the Michigan City Common Council Workshop. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Good evening and welcome to the City Council Workshop of Michigan City Common Council. Has been called by Council President Tracy Tillman for Monday, July 7th, 2025 at 5:00 PM. Located in the E O C room. This meeting has been called to discuss and review the following to address Sola Development Project's request for approval of an Economic Improvement District, which is E I D, and access to developer-backed bond financing for the project. We do have the developers of Sola here and I would like to turn it over to you gentlemen. If you could introduce yourselves as well, please.
Thank you. I am Alan Shockman, one of the developers of Sola.
And that's Scott Goodman, one of the other developers of Sola.
And we're, we're the leads on the project. So we have a lot of attorneys and bond people and everyone else. We should be able to answer most, if not all, the questions. If not, we can ask our attorneys and our bond. Scott and I know pretty much 99% of it, but there's always legal questions or details about bonds. So I'm going to go through hopefully what is a brief presentation and feel free to ask any questions at any time. I want this to be a conversation and a dialogue. It's easier to ask questions when they come to mind. So this is the Sola project. Project team, Scott Goodman, myself, Alan Shockman, Rob Hart from N W I Development. Rob also will be doing the short-term rental program. You may know Rob, that he runs Vacation Rentals and he's already branded Sola Vacation Rentals. It'll be a separate, separately run company, but you know, Rob's company will service everything with facilities they already have. Barry Shane from Wabash Associates is another one of our partners. Elliot Estes and Michael Blank, they run a company called Woodmont Lodging. They're based out of DC. They're kind of our hotel experts. We're using Stifel, which is a nationally known company for bond issuance and sale. Andrew Lanham is located in Indianapolis and Trevor McDonough is in St. Louis. Who's our legal counsel on this aspect. And then Chris Anderson from White Lodging. So White Lodging will be the hotel operator. This is new information. We haven't previously announced it. We'll talk a little bit about the hotel, a little bit. We're waiting for approval from a new hotel partner, which we'll get on Thursday and then we'll be able to announce the hotel and White Lodging. But I think most of you probably know White Lodging, Indiana-based company, very, very high quality. It's a $303 million project, approximately 242 hotel rooms, including 24 suites, 21,000 feet of retail. It'll be a combination of service retail and food and beverage, 188 residential condos, which include 18 townhouses, enclosed parking on site for 386 cars and lots of them.
Good question. How many of those are intended to be the short-term rental locations?
So we are opening up the short-term rental program to any owner that wants to use it. We intend to keep a number of condos for our own short-term rental program, somewhere around 50 to 60. The remaining ones, 128, call it. It'll be up to the owners if they want to use the short-term rental program and when. A lot of people put the units into the rental pool and then when it's not being rented, they'll use it themselves. That's kind of the way it works. There will be a number of people that buy the condos for a primary residence and not for short-term rental. Currently, based on our sales, that's running at about just under 20% of the condos, which is kind of interesting. Just some views. I'm not sure if anyone's seen these before, but this is the fourth floor vanity deck looking out to the lake. And this is the corner of Washington and 12. The condo entrance and the short-term rental entrances will both be on this corner. This is the view from Bell Creek, the water essentially. Hotel tower is on the left. Townhouse is in the middle of the condo tower on the right. An aerial view again, hotel on the left, condo on the right, townhouse is in front.
Can you go back that side?
Sure.
So City Hall is on the left, your side?
Correct.
On the left of that?
Right, just where the sidewalk is, just?
Yeah, to the left.
To the left. I just want to make sure everybody?
You're looking south right now.
Yeah, City Hall is here.
And Lubeznek's on the other side.
Lubeznek is right here.
Yeah. I know, that's why I said that's?
Yeah, it's a different angle. You don't see this one that often.
Yeah.
Same kind of view, City Hall's to the left, Lubeznek's in front to the right. A little closer shot of the condo tower and the townhouse. So you know, I've kind of described it, a nationally known upscale hotel brand, residences, restaurants, retail spaces, outdoor areas. You know, we think that Sola will really establish this area, the southern river like Michigan. Sola, by the way, is short for South of Lake, very creative. The views will be fantastic. There'll be amenities for residents, the residence pool deck, pool and fitness center, community room, kitchen, pet washing, bicycle storage, mail package center. Hotel amenities will, you know, be again, resort-style swimming pool and deck area, fitness center and spa, which is open to the public, various restaurants, coffee shops, bars and lawns.
I have a question.
Yes.
When you, you said the City Hall was to the left?
Yes.
Lubeznek to the right. And when you're linking, you mentioned the image of the pool, the prior pool?
Yes.
That's facing?
So that's kind of facing Lubeznek. So Lubeznek is?
And when you say primary pool, that doesn't mean sunbathing or anything like that. Only reason why I'm saying, I was looking at the angle from the courthouse.
It's two pools though.
There are now two pools. This is an older record.
Okay.
So there will be sun on here. The, you know, the condo towers here is 13 stories, the hotels here are 13 stories. In the middle here, there's a seven-story piece.
Okay.
And this is up, four stories are red. So as the sun sweeps around this way, you'll get sun on this deck, most of the time.
I was just wondering what's going to be the view for employees at the courthouse? Because I know our conference window looks right across.
They'll look straight into? Straight across through that. It's kind of like a hole.
Go back to the south looking, yeah.
So you see how this portion is low? So the courthouse is right here. So they'll be able to look straight through to the courthouse.
Okay.
As long as it's not on the ground.
No.
You know, the Sola project kind of provides a connection between the harbor and public beach and the new train station everyone knows about. Fantastic new train station and the new train line. And we really think it'll transform this area into development that will be fantastic. And we really see this as contributing to the future growth of Michigan City. So we're here today to talk about the bonds, the TIF bonds and the E I Ds. First you mentioned, E I D is Economic Improvement District. We'll talk about that a little bit more. The bonds together total about $60 million. We'll show you what we call the capital stack, which is all the different pieces necessary to finance 303 million. The bonds are very important. We'll talk about that too. Without that 60 million, the project metrics are very questionable. I won't say they don't work, but it makes it very difficult to do it without.
I kind of want to interrupt this for a second, just to explain what these things really are, because this is really meant to educate you a little bit about what we're doing with these E I D. Everybody I think probably know what TIF is. E I D is a little bit different. Both these things are putting no burden on the city. The TIF is the increment, as you all know, of new taxes being generated by this project. So that's not taking anything from the city. And the E I D bonds are, if you think about your property tax and there's line item on the property taxes, this will be another line item on our property tax bills and the property tax bills only associated with this building. And so what happens is reissue bonds based on revenue from this property. And the bond is a debt, right? It's money that has to get paid back. An E I D bond is payable probably over 25 years. It's not like bank debt. It's actually just like property tax debt. And it goes with the property to the property owners, not to the community. The city has zero liability or risk associated with this. I just want to be really clear about that. We want you to understand what this tool is, because we think it's a really effective tool, but all the burden is on us and it's not on the city whatsoever. I just want to make sure that's clear.
And if you could convey this as well, you're saying the parking tax and the burden falls on the developer, but it's not the tax?
Not the developer, that's clearly, yeah.
So in other words, it's really a fee that you can hit that goes back to the developer, to the property?
Yeah, and we'll get into the details in a little bit. You can call it a tax, you can call it a fee. It's the same thing. And we'll show you, you know, when you go to a hotel and you stay and there's a destination fee or something, same, same concept. And as Scott said, it only applies to this product. There's nothing, no other tax fee, whatever, that steps outside the boundaries.
And I'm here because that's probably the concern.
Yeah.
Is the bond and the funding, are you going to be able to pay the bond and so forth? Because I don't want us to get halfway through and we have to default. That is the only reason I'm here. I've seen the picture, I know what it looks like. Awesome.
Yeah.
But?
Well, I have to tell you, we've been working for a long time to make sure that that doesn't happen.
And I'm really, really concerned.
Yeah, no, we've got very detailed models. Let's get a little more into it and we'll explain exactly how these get paid back and you'll see, we'll, you know, answer other questions. But basically, Scott said, there's still no financial risk to the city. If there's a shortfall, it's on us. It's not on the city.
And I tend not to agree with that a little bit, because we are the front-facing people of the city and we took, we did a ribbon cutting almost two, three, four years ago now.
Oh God.
And so people approached me, asking me what's going on. And so I kind of disagree with that, that all the risk is on you, because all the risk is? We understand there's reputational risk, right? So we're talking about all of us and we're sorry it's taken so long, but this is a really ambitious project and for Michigan City and for anywhere really in this market. It's been a really difficult market to get anything built. If you go downtown Chicago, you don't see a crane down there. So this thing is moving along at a very normal pace and it's not, it's not anything extraordinary. You know, don't forget, we've just been through a pandemic. We've been through a real economic downturn. For us real estate guys, it's been really challenging and we're kind of proud of where we are with this thing, you know, that it continues to move forward in a really healthy way, actually.
So the public benefits will include a large program, public space on the fourth floor deck, which is accessible through a grand staircase on Franklin, public parking in the garage. We're doing infrastructure modifications around the site, including straightening out the intersection in front of the Lubeznek Center. And then of course, public access to new retail, restaurants, food and beverage, and then the world-class hotel and spa.
I have a question?
Yes, sir.
As far as the public benefits, I understand everything you're saying there. And I don't know if the city has approached you and I don't know if that's to come into this presentation. But it's like any, is there like any investment like into the city parks or the city library or the, you know, the city public schools? Is your company willing to make any kind of contributions in that respect? I mean?
We do have a fully baked development agreement with the city. Part of that includes a donation for affordable housing, which is to be used at the city's discretion. So yes, we are making a donation.
How much is that?
About $450,000.
A year?
One time. So the capital stack is what I mentioned before. So 303 million dollar cost. You can see the different portions of it. Our cash equity in the deal is about $47 million, $166 million construction loan, $27.5 for the Mezine loan. And then the TIF bonds and the E I D bonds are $29 million and $21 million. We'll utilize at some point deposits on the condos and then the hotel company will provide what they call new money to us once the project opens, which comes up to 303 million. The actual amounts of the bonds that are issued will be 43 million for the TIF and 33 for the E I D. The difference between the numbers on the left and the numbers on the right are costs, issuers' costs, maintenance costs. But as we said, there are no city guarantees, no city cash contributions, and no balance sheet impact to the city at all. No impact to city financing mechanisms or the ability to do other projects. And then as we said, the city isn't taking any financial risk. So here's what we were talking about before. So the bonds need to be repaid. The TIF is repaid from the increments. So it's the increment from the taxes on the site today, which is zero. Basically, once the project is up and running, assessed, much higher taxes, portion of that goes to repay the TIF bonds. For the E I D, it's an occupancy tax on hotel room nights and short-stay, short-term rental room nights, which we will collect. And then in addition, a portion of the parking revenue goes to repay the E I D bonds. Both are completely site-specific. It's all based on the project. There's no impact outside of the boundaries of the project. The TIF bonds are the senior bonds. They're repayable solely from the TIF revenue generated in the project. The E I D bonds first are repaid for any surplus in the TIF. And then the special assessments against the project, which are what I referred to earlier, the hotel room and room nights and short-term rental stay income. A portion of the parking revenue, they are guaranteed by us, the developer. There's no city backup, no guarantee, no obligations with the city in this regard. So now we're going to get into a little bit of what the actual law is. You know, the state of Indiana denotes E I Ds, they're sometimes referred to as BID, Business Improvement District, but it's a special district where the property owners, in this case us, make a contribution to the development, maintenance and promotion of the site and certain improvements developed within the E I D. The E I D provides an economic and community development tool and it allows targeted control, financing and development without creating an additional financing burden, burden on the city, the county, any municipal taxing. Kind of to go over this again, there are special assessments that are paid by the property owners. Again, in this case, it's both us, the developer who owned the hotel and the HOA. So the condo association, homeowners association, so the condo owners that want to put their units into the short-term rental program, part of that bill will be this E I D fee. We'll collect that from the condo association annually and then pay the hotel portion and pay that all to the city.
Okay. I need clarification. True. Not everyone's paying the HOA or not, if you were paying the E I D or if you own the short-term rental, but everybody's paying the HOA.
So yeah, so the condo association will have assessments. Everyone will pay those. This is a special tax. So if you own a unit and you rent the unit out four weeks a year, there'll be an eight or nine percent tax added to that, that will be paid by the person who rents the unit and will be collected by the HOA. So if you're an owner that's primary residence or you don't, short-term rental, there is no assessment on your?
Only if you rent it out.
Only if you rent it out. And then of course, every hotel room will have.
So basically, it's a service fee for the, like, short-term rentals going to the HOA for maintaining whatever they got.
To service the property.
Yep.
It's an additional inkeeper. Yeah, that's a good way to think about it.
And it's just like an inkeeper tax or a property tax that's collecting at the same time. So the E I D is governed by a board. The board is appointed by the common council. The law is the board must have at least three members. Majority of the members must own real property within the E I D. And the parameters are set forth in the ordinance establishing the E I D.
Hold on a second.
True.
It must live within the E I D, but is the E I D only, you said, specific to this project?
Not live.
Not live.
Own property.
Own.
And it is just this project. That is it. So they have to own, it'll be, E I D will be us and then whoever the members that, you know, Clarence, the redevelopment commission points, who will technically be the owners of the property before it's transferred to us.
It says, it says, um, council.
Appointed by, but Clarence will nominate someone from, I assume, or it can be just you guys. I don't know.
Yeah, we'll, we need to get into that, because I think, I thought there was, I thought there, it says what happens in the legislation. Doesn't the legislation tell us how to set up a board?
Yeah, it does.
Okay.
Right now, it's the three. I guess the point of this is it's not just us.
Oh, okay. All right.
Mayor, I think the first, so right now, the ownership is, there's two LLCs and the redevelopment commission. That creates the diversity of, so we could set up the E I D. I think it'll be those three owners at first, then I think the council will then appoint the new board, if you will, or however. Once we have the first meeting and do all the, we still have to have a meeting for the E I D and do all those things too. We talked about that, yeah, I think last Friday, about how that works. But you're right, there is a, or an enabling legislation that controls it. But the point is, the council appoints them.
Okay.
Thanks, Scott. So this gets into kind of the details of the E I D creation timeline. We've noticed a notice of initiation, E I D, which will be filed tomorrow. Petition and proposed ordinance will be submitted to the court again tomorrow. And then this all has to get done within 120 days. Petition has to be signed by at least 60% of the real property owners. As Skylar said, it's the two LLCs, the redevelopment commission, also signed by the owners that constitute 60% of the assessed valuation, same. And then step two is a notice of public hearing. Step three, a common council holds public hearing. As you can see, the questions, the sufficiency of the notice, whether the proposed economic improvement projects are of quality, whether the assessment formula is appropriate, if the district contains all or less than all of the properties, specifically the property by the proposed project, in this case, all. Step four then is the ordinances are adopted by the common council.
You read step three and that may go, that is, that's a lot for a common council person to know, who would be getting some help from like Baker Tilly or somebody like that to come to step in?
You will have?
That is high-level stuff.
So when, when the E I D goes through, you will have Craig Devault there, who is prepared to see E I D documents. So that's, that's, that's?
Our council.
Sola's council.
Okay.
Part four council. And then you will have Barnes and Thornburg on our side, which is Randolph from Pola. They all have interacted together. We meet regularly, every Friday, all together. And they've created documents and reviewed documents and sent documents back and forth so you can be able to hear from each one of those respective entities.
We're sticking up for me.
To make sure that we're creating, that we're following the rules, noticing, et cetera, et cetera.
Whether the assessment formula is appropriate, like, oh my God.
You don't know that?
This is a lot of what's been in the legislation.
Yeah.
But as Skylar says, we've been working on this for months, like every week. You've got 16 people on the call, F more lawyers. I mean, the answers to all these are yes. We know the answers.
And you have Stifel preparing numbers, Baker Tilly preparing, reviewing and vice versa. So there's a check and a balance to it all and they'll all be there. We just didn't bring them tonight because it's a lot of money. So we have them, we'll have them at your next meeting when we actually need them.
Yes. I do have a question.
That's a good call.
I do have a question. How long are the bonds? Is it?
Twenty-two, twenty-five. It's 25 years, 20 years.
Okay.
And that's all controlled by the legislature.
Yeah, okay.
So after the adoption, the board mails notice of the proposed assessments to the property owners, assessment hours must be dealt with in 20 days. Step six, E I D board holds proposed E I D assessment hearing. Majority of the board must approve, sign the assessment schedule. Then step seven, assessments settled, transferred to the E I D board, deposited in the E I D fund. And so the E I D board is supposed to file an annual report with common council, summarizing its activities and expenditures. And the E I D board is also required to submit an annual budget that will be approved by the common council. Now, just a little aside, all this costs money to do, those costs are already baked in. So again, city's not paying for any of this. Those costs are baked into the bond issuance costs. This is the timeline that we have all put together. Again, on these Friday morning meetings, basically the adoption of the ordinance is August 19th. And then the next real important date is, we expect everything to close December 19th. So when I say everything, so the bonds will go on sale, they'll be sold, and we need to close the equity, the debt, all the bonds, before we can start the project, which we're shooting for December 19th so we can start filing it. And this is aggressive, but it is doable. And Skylar, I think instrumental in putting together the schedule.
So we're looking at Indiana, you're looking for us?
Yes, sir.
And it's far? As far as construction possibilities?
Yep. Which is, if people say, oh, you're, you're gonna start in the middle of winter. It's actually the best time to start drilling caseouts, which this project will be found in a caseout. Because the ground's solidified, some of the groundwater is, you know, harder than it would be in July. You don't get the mushiness. So it's technical terms.
Well, they're deep too, right? They're a hundred and, a hundred feet, a hundred, a hundred forty feet deep.
Yes. Just another question, is there going to be some above-ground infrastructure owned by Nitsco that's a part of this project? It's gonna be adjacent to it?
So the, um, power lines are actually gonna come across Second Street and then go below grade and come down Franklin, below grade towards, um, twelve. And then when they get to the, before the sidewalk, they'll turn and come into the building. So that's already been all worked out with Nitsco. But there won't be, there'll be transporters, which maybe is what you're referring to. They'll actually be on the site. They'll be fenced in, but they'll be along twelve. So, but everything is gonna be self-contained within the site. These are just a few examples of other EIDs. The first two are interesting because they are very, very similar to this EID in that they're site-specific. The Hammond Data Center Redevelopment is for redevelopment infrastructure. And then the Valpo Housing EID was just for a single multifamily project. The rest of them are, you know, public transportation, AR, purification, various things. But the first two are, um, just like the solar one, which would be very site-specific. So, um, I know that was a lot of information. Any questions that, things that are out there? Yes?
You mentioned that there are gonna be areas open to the public by the pool and fitness center. Is there gonna be a fee for the public to use those or the parking?
So there will be public parking, we will charge for it, yes. The pool and, so there'll be two pools and two fitness centers. One for the hotel and one for the condos. The condo pool and fitness center will not be open to the public, but we do anticipate that public will be able to use the hotel pool and fitness centers for, for a fee. And then the spa, of course, you know, you'll, you'll book it, just as you book any spa. You know, book a massage or whatever services you want, and that's all over the public. The, the.
Residents?
All over the public will, will have, um, on the ground floor, there will be a coffee shop, a bar at the hotel, and then a, uh, three-meal-a-day, seven-day-a-week restaurant. There'll be a specialty restaurant up on the second level that'll be kind of right on the corner here on Franklin and, uh, twelve. It'll be actually a two-level. And then there will be a rooftop restaurant as well with, um, fantastic outdoor space. And there'll, there'll, you'll all room up there, you'll be able to rent it or, you know, use for various city meetings if the city wants to use it. It'll be, it'll be spectacular, especially that rooftop space.
So for the parking cost?
Um, public. We haven't set the rates yet, um, but, you know, it'll, it'll be, be a lot less than parking in Chicago, that's for sure. We, we have to do a market study on, on what the, you know, hotel parking rates are. And the hotel guests will be able to self-park or will have a fairly large LA, uh, section for the hotel and for events.
Yeah, and I think, and just in my opinion, um, having, um, parking, we wanna make sure that the guests get the parking and not just public in general. You know, when I, when you say public, I think of the hotel guests as the short-term rental people in a lot of cases. Because you're gonna need, you know, you're gonna have residents that have parking. Then you're gonna have people who are paying to stay there that require parking. So there's not gonna be a lot, uh, if it's fully, you know, that we just got re- regular people. I'm not gonna be a city employee parking over there.
Well, and it's gonna be seasonal too.
Yeah.
I mean, this time of year, there's not gonna be a lot of public parking available. You know, December third is coming.
And you, I believe, how many parking spaces?
Uh, three hundred and eighty-five. There's a lot. And, and the condos will all get a parking space when they buy a condo. It's actually gonna be a license. We're not, they, they don't actually hold it because we'll retain ownership of the parking garage. So that's a hundred and eighty-eight spaces there. Plus, uh, if you buy a townhouse, you get two spaces and they'll be right behind the townhouses. So that's two hundred and sixteen spaces. And then the rest will be open for hotel, short-term rental. We, you know, we're trying to, it, this is really an operational question, but, you know, if the short-term rental unit is, is rented by four or five families, we can't accommodate all their cars. So we're gonna have LA parking, we'll do a deal with, you know, White House, perhaps the courthouse to have space for those funds.
Um, I have one other question. So.
You, you can jump in there.
Yeah.
She, she had an option.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, I'm, I'm going back to the examples of economic improvement districts in, I don't know where we have all the, and in Fort Wayne, places like that. Were those, did they have a, uh, huge part of those that were funded by bonds as well when they did these projects?
Yes.
What type of interest rate did they get?
You know, the interest rate is set by the market. And we'll know that until we go out.
Yeah.
But there is a, in the, in the ordinances, there are maximum interest rates. So I think the TIF has a maximum rate of eight percent. And the EID has a maximum rate of ten percent. But when this is all done and Stifel, they won't know, does the package and the bonds are underwritten, then they'll price them probably around October fifteenth and then go out to the market. But, yeah, they have to be market-priced, otherwise.
Yeah, I mean, and you can probably see my concern in the fact that the return on the interest rate is gonna be enough for people to buy them.
I, I.
How big of a discount are they gonna sell there for to get them to buy the?
Again, this is all modeled in great detail by Stifel. And this is, uh, they're, they're one of the renowned experts in public finance. They know what we're doing. And, and, you know, there's, there's a lot of eyes on it. We've, we've looked at the cities, everyone will say it.
Just to spin off of what Councilman David said, do you have an approximate of how many right now have you sold any?
Yep, we've sold, uh, we have thirty-one fully executed contracts. We have about five that are out for signatures, so that'll be thirty-six. And, and the progress has been steady, but we'll have a press release after we get approval of the hotel company. You know, this, I don't think it's any secret, it started out as Two Wyndham Hotels. We were contacted by a hotel company that I'll be able to tell you who it is after Thursday, but it's a definite upgrade from Wyndham. And we think that's gonna be pretty exciting. Once the EID bonds are approved by the common council, we'll do another press release. So each one of these will, will kind of spur more sales.
That was my other question that I couldn't comment on. So with this hotel establishment, will they be bringing in their own staffing? Or will this also hold enough activities to employ it for?
There'll be huge employment opportunities. So one of the reasons, I mean, there are a lot of reasons we went with White Lodging. First and foremost, they're an Indian-based company and they have a real soft reputation. But White Lodging is very, knows the local labor market like no one else. I mean, they're basically very ill, but they, they know the Indian labor market. And it will be staffed by, you know, as many local residents as we can get. I mean, huge, huge number of jobs available. I mean, perfect.
Yeah, and then the, uh, the pricing on the condos? Do you have, I know, I know there's different pricing ranges, right?
Yes.
Can you maybe run through them real quick? I don't know by chance.
I mean, I know they start right around four hundred thousand dollars. And the most expensive units are a million, two. On a per-square-foot basis, it's an average of about five fifty a square foot, which is significantly less than, for instance, you could get the same unit four in Chicago. It's about two hundred dollars a square foot less. And it's the same quality finishes, you know, same, same quality construction. So, you know, it, it, it's, as Scott said, I mean, this is a, this is a tough one. You know, we go out to, to people in New York, bankers essentially, and they're like, Michigan City where? You know, it's just a, and same thing with the condo sales. People that know this wonderful area and know all the great things that we don't know, it's no problem. But, you know, to, to get people outside the area to be interested in it. So my point is, we, we had to price it at a discount to what you buy in Chicago, which is challenging because the costs are the same. So in the end, we're just making less money.
And we're, we're, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, um, since this took, uh, was initiated, like, twenty-twenty-two?
Yes.
And there were some setbacks. And I hear a lot of the concerns was in regards to getting this project financed. With your capital stack and everything that's been presented, is there any possibility that this may not move forward because of that? And I understand we're, we're talking about, we had the pandemic and with our new administrator of the United States in a different change. That, that has changed a lot of things in how banking is, is may or may not land or at the time right now. So is that?
It is an incredibly.
Still a possible, possibility that it may not?
It, it's an incredibly complex puzzle that we're putting together. There's always risk. But we're far enough down the road. We've actually got, uh, what's called a GMP, a guaranteed maximum price from a very well-known contractor. It's actually a joint venture, part of it's Indiana, part of it's Chicago. So we know what the cost is. You know, we, we have to do kind of final drawings and go off a bid, but we're pretty confident of that. And we're in conversations with, um, very reputable firms on equity and debt. But one of the challenging things is that everyone wants to know what everything else is. So a big part of this is the bonds and our equity. The people who we're talking to are in the equity are like, well, are, are the bonds approved by the common council yet? It's like, well, no, not yet. It's like, okay, well, call us when they are. So my, my point is, we have to kind of put everything in place at once. Very little is actually done today. And we're taking the next four, five, six months to, to.
I was just gonna say, that's the irony of our business, is that everything has to happen at once, but it all really happens sequentially. And that's the problem, right? And, and we believe strongly, the minute we put a shovel in the ground and every, all this doubt goes away that says, you know, is this thing really gonna happen? That's when condo sales really start to accelerate at a rapid pace. Well, unfortunately, we need those condo sales in order to secure the full capital stack. So it's a lot of chicken and the egg stuff. We're pulling it all together, it's all coming together. You can see we're getting, you know, almost twenty-five percent of the condos we're actually intending to sell are under contract already. That's a big step. Getting these bonds approved by you guys is a big step going forward. Getting white, uh, getting this hotel group that you'll see coming in, it's the, the, the flag you'll recognize, but the, the holding company you'll really recognize, and it's, it's just a fantastic reservation system, you'll all know who it is really soon. It's gonna be a big step and a big thing for a market like Michigan City, which is to many a tertiary market from a hotel standpoint. But, but we know, we are in this market, is we know we'll fill those rooms. And guess what? The, the, the hotel study came back and validated that for us. So we're not making this, we're, we're not funding business. We, you know, it's, it's, P T Barnum used to say that if people don't wanna come, you can't stop them. But, you know, we, we know, we know that people wanna come to, to Harbor Country. We know that this is, you know, we have the greatest natural resources within three miles of where we sit right here. It's, it's just an incredible place. We, we, we have to prove it to investors. And that's what we go out and do every day, right? We're out there selling, we're out there telling our story. And that's really what, you know, for a living, what Alan and I do is we tell stories and we borrow money. Oh, yeah, there's some development that goes in there with it. But it's really those two things that really get this thing done.
And, and you guys don't know us. You will get to know us, but Scott and I, together, have done probably more developments in and around Chicago than pretty much anyone else you can find. I've been a multifamily developer for thirty years, Scott's been in this for.
Hundred fifty.
You both have, uh, really good track records, but even more importantly, a lot of this is relationships. Who you know, who you've done business with. So we're drawing on all that. We've got, as I said, lawyers, bond counsel. We have a firm, uh, that is strictly capital market going out and looking for equity and debt. So, I mean, we've done this before, we're doing it again. This is a particularly challenging time, but.
But look, we have to convince you. And you're, and you're the friendliest crowd. There is, this is your talent. And we still have to convince you that this is a really feasible project. We all believe it, but not until we see it, right? And, and so we're gonna make you see it, but it's, it's worth getting there. And that's, and that's really why we have community meetings too, right? Because we need your support more than we need anything else. And that's, that's really what makes these things successful.
A quick question. I, I knew you said, you have several people under contract already for the condos. Are you having luck on the retail space? And how is retail, retail space?
We, we haven't started leasing the retail. The retail people really wanna actually see the physical space. So we've gotten a lot of interest before anything, before planned. And we've got restaurant groups from Chicago that wanna come here for sure. We've got an outfitter that wants to be here, which we think would be great. Corner of Franklin and, and twelve, you know, rent bikes and paddleboarders and kayaks, that kind of thing. We've got a spa that wants to be here, we've got a coffee shop that wants to be here, we've got, uh, no salt, no sharks wanna be here. So for, for actually not even marketing and not even anything, we've got a lot of interest.
A Trader Joe?
Everybody always wants a Trader Joe.
I was trying to bring up the U K, right? We gotta, we gotta get the people first.
I think Trader Joe should go in the new trade station building. What do you, what do you think?
I think it'd be, you got another one?
We had other plans for that.
The mayor's got it, I had to figure it out.
We'll entertain their call when it comes.
I'd love a Whole Foods with mayor.
That would work on that too.
I'll take a Trader Joe.
Yeah, a couple more questions.
Sure.
So with the condos sold, you said you had thirty-six condos sold?
Thirty-six contracts out, thirty-one fully executed with earnest money. We've got about two million.
So you got thirty-one sold and thirty-six under a contract?
I, yeah, five hundred contracts, right. We've got about two million dollars of earnest money already received and at the top of it.
Okay, and the top one goes at one point two million, what's the next one dollar?
I, I can get back down, I don't have that off the top of my head. But actually, uh, we've, we've sold a combined unit at the top, the two lake-facing, uh, units for two and a half million dollars. So it's one, one quarter.
So how many total condos will you have?
A hundred and eighty.
Pardon?
One hundred and eighty-eight.
One hundred and eighty. One hundred and eighty-eight.
Okay.
And how many of those are yours?
We're, we're gonna, depending on how sales go, we're gonna keep, I'll call it sixty, that's the number.
Okay, sixty.
So, so we're gonna actually sell a hundred and twenty-eight. But if people wanna buy more, we could sell more. And, um, you know, the short-term rental is a good business, but frankly, I'd rather sell.
Yeah.
I have a comment in regards to the hotel. And I know you would like to, at our next council meeting, to have this put on our next agenda. Before council approves, and I know you mentioned that the name of the hotel would possibly be available to be released to the council.
This week.
This week.
Right.
So we will know before we need to make a decision.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
We're, we're gonna do a press release hopefully Friday morning. We're gonna do a press release hopefully Friday morning that'll announce it. So there are approval committees Thursday afternoon. And again, this is not a, we've been working with this company since December of last year.
It's more than a south coast.
Some of those, nice ones, some of those are in California.
Yeah, the company has a very, very large footprint. The largest in the world, so it's certainly a brand that, it's gonna have a lot of issues.
Okay, and then the parking, there'll be a charge for the parking and there'll be a charge for the pool, use of the pool?
For the public, if the public cannot stay at the hotel. Yes.
Okay.
Which, which I think was feasible, how different than when we had the public pools, we had to pay a minimal, small little admission fees to get in.
Yeah, but, you know, let me say this, and I don't know this in other places, but if I go to a hotel and I'm staying there, I'm gonna expect the public coming in using the pool. I guess I'm confused.
I don't either.
I would think, when I think of public, I think of, we know who are paying to be there.
We don't think this is meant to be a public pool per se.
Yes, it's not.
It's supposed to meant a...
Public for the people who are renting.
Yeah, or paying like a membership fee or, you know, it's probably not a one-time use fee. It might be the same way you'd use a health club type of thing.
Yes.
Okay, so to me, that's kind of deceiving, to put that up in black and white, to say that it's available to the public, but really, it's not available to the public.
We should change that.
It's available to folks that are coming to the hotel.
And maybe that's what we got.
But the community is invited to join, right? So that's, that's, but I get your point, you're, you're, you're right.
So, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause every time I've seen this, I felt the same thing, that it was open to anybody.
Yeah, okay, that's bad.
Let's read the last, last clause. I don't see anywhere where we've said the pool is open to the public.
Yeah. He says permanent benefits include...
The public space on the fourth floor, that's not the pool.
Public parking in the garage.
Parking garage.
Public parking in the garage.
Yeah, yeah.
There's nothing that says the pool is open to the public. The hotel and spa is, of course, any hotel you go to, if you can go to the spa.
Yeah, there you go, public access to retail, food, beverage shops.
So we're not saying the pool, the hotel and spa.
Yep, it just, your mind takes you to it.
Yeah.
When you say...
I mean, we may have even said that, it's not meaning only, not before it came up. So if we did that, we apologize, but it's...
That's good, that's great, that's a good thought. Thank you, Don, though, for bringing that up. I think that's a thought, but, I mean, it's, it's...
This is like somebody else.
It's clear right there, it's clear.
Alan, can you go back to the, can you go just for a minute, just to the schedule?
Sure.
Just so everybody knows, because that's really what's driving all of this, is this right here. Just for council's knowledge and kind of talk a little bit more about it.
Yeah, I really appreciate that.
By August nineteenth, by August nineteenth, that's when we, I hope we're done with council. And that's what Alan and them were talking about, Alan and Scott were talking about. At that point in time, they'll, they'll know that they have access to the EID and the tool and access to the TIF bonds, right? They'll be able to go out to their investors, their financiers, et cetera, and make the dominoes kind of fall, if you will.
And I will say that I asked that we get through this by September so that we won't go into our budget in time. So that was a lot of that, because, you know, we start putting the budget on the agenda in September. We don't wanna convolute, wanna be focused on one thing and not doing so much at the same time.
Do you, should council, do you all think that we can give another workshop after the first reading?
Yes.
With this?
We're more than happy to.
I mean, the redevelopment, we've had our meeting, our meetings, which is open to the public. This one was open to the public. I was hoping to see a bigger turnout to address any questions or concerns that the public would have. So do you all feel that we could need another workshop to give that one last opportunity if there are any more public questions or concerns?
I don't think we should, we should think about that till the one now. I think we have a better idea on whether or not we just wanna have a second reading or something.
And then also, you can always share the link, the link out, I mean, as well. I mean, this is pretty clear.
But Scott, you mentioned that there would be another meeting with all the lawyers.
I'm so sorry.
Which one is that?
So we'll have all of our attorneys, all attorneys, everyone will be present. I doubt we'll be there on the fifteenth for first reading, because typically, unless you guys want us there, because typically you don't ask us any questions, we just get it on the floor. But we will be there for the fifth and the nineteenth, for your official public hearings. And I imagine that's where you'll get a lot of your, you'll be able to figure out, do we need another?
Right.
You know, hearing, do we need another time?
I agree with that. And then I recommend if you do that, that it's the same day or prior to the council meeting.
I agree with that.
I agree.
Well, and just in fairness to the other council members that aren't, I mean, there's only four council members here today, right? The elements down here are five, I'm sorry. So there's four that are missing on vacation or working or what have you, so. And so they understand everything is so clear, we might have to have another workshop for them. But something to think about.
Yes.
Yeah, we're happy to do that.
Yeah. And the nineteenth, and then the nineteenth of December, kind of the, those are the big dates that put into our economic development addendum with Farpoint, just for, from the redevelopment commission side of things. Those are kind of the linchpin dates, if you will, we'll put in there.
Were there any other questions or comments from the public or from the council?
Not for me, no. I need to sit somewhere away from them.
What are you doing there?
No, this is good, very clear.
Well, thanks for the...
Great presentation.
Appreciate it. Actually, we've answered your questions.
Thank you, and your slides were very well done and easy for us to, these readers, Dan, right? I really appreciate that.
We've been working on this for weeks and nights, so I've got to thank Mayor Skylar and Wendy for their guidance on this. Thank you all.
Thank you.